Heavenly Father, we ask you to be with us tonight, Lord, and we ask you to remember any arrogance or self-righteousness we may have, Lord, fill us with humility and grace, and allow us to walk in your life, Lord, as your children. Tonight, we ask for some special prayers for our own Mr. Gonzalez, as he continues to heal surgery, and we just ask you to be with him, Lord, and his family, continue to give him healing powers. And then we also say another special prayer for Mr. Reyes' child, as the family works through that, and we continue to ask for healing powers for them as well. Tonight, Lord, we ask you to, again, fill us with your grace, help us to have courage and your wisdom as we discuss matters of our town, and we make decisions in the best interest of our citizens and all those who live there. Lord, we ask you to be with all of the others, those who need you the most, and all those who need you. Just understand that, right?
I'm excited to be here today, the United States of America, and to the rest of the world, which has one nation under God, in the best law, for diversity and justice for all. I am in Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Constitution, that this is one on the day, under God, on my own.
House Member Howard?
Yes.
House Member Allen?
Yes.
House Member Gonzalez? House Member Ryan? House Member Dan? Thanks for your doctor, and travel needs to be in the third.
What can I do? This is Dr. Rose, and this is Dr. Allen.
I'll start.
Yes.
House Member Tony?
Yes.
House Member Ryan?
Yeah.
House Member David?
Yes.
Yes. Open forum, sample time, about three minutes of emergency work to hear on any topic. We know especially the problem we actually take in there is a guy. Speaker wants to identify themselves for seeking speaker request form must be presented to the secretary prior to meeting. Yeah, excuse me. All right. First is Riley.
Now, we went to the CHF side, or the certain As the town council may or may not know, last Thursday, a decision of our local staff by draft press, an announcement of South Padre's families long spring for more, providing comprehensive healthcare for island residents and business. The announcement was reported by Wesley Rockford, regional chief nursing director for primary healthcare, region that was bringing out all's Harlingen medical center. In the announcement, Wesley Rockford stated that the lack of convenient healthcare is a reason why someone would think twice while moving or visiting South Padre Island. Substitute to the city of South Padre Island with the city of La Guanavista, and that's going to perfect reason why La Guanavista residents like South Padre Island residents need access to primary healthcare. Harlingen Medical Center CEO Candy Constantine Castillo listed the services that will be available for that family wellness program. They will provide routine checkups while women exhales, vaccines, prescriptions, diapers, high blood pressure checks, along with referrals to specialists and in-office lab testing. Clinics for primary care build a case for the needs for higher levels of healthcare, like urgent care, eventually emergency care for its residents and visitors want. As the newly constituted primary care advisory board is their first step in La Guanavista's quest for access to primary healthcare, I felt this information would be informative and hopefully useful to the town council and the primary public care advisory board. Thank you.
Next, we have Tony G. And Tony, I'm pretty sure we're gonna best. I've been quiet for a long time, but now we're pulled back. I want to take a moment to speak truth with the rumors and afters, and unfortunately are being spread in our community. I do this because I'm not a social media keyboard warrior. Nothing's ever resolved on social media. I've been attached to this is my 10th year, going on my 10th year as Chief Police here, I've been attached to this community since 1986, since I was a young state superhero. I'd like to start by thanking past council, future council, and y'all. Because y'all have always done everything by state law and all regulations. Unfortunately, there are some people here that don't understand that, or don't want to abide by that. So I want to thank you and tell you, I appreciate y'all doing that very much. I also want to address some rumors and falsehoods. Well, I was going to be nice to say that, but I'm just going to say straight out lies. All right, Mr. Aiden? That day you said I manhandled you, posted on social media, I gave you a brotherly pat on the back to get your attention. Okay, another disgusting thing you post is reference to our ex-mayor about an inappropriate relationship. That is a disgusting falsehood, and it's about a person who's part of, was part of our community, and such lies only displays a lack of honor and is disappointing in a man or a marine. Okay? Mr. Reese? I never even laid a hand on you. I never touched you. I don't know what your motivation is. Okay, I'm getting to you. I don't know what your motivation is. All right, but can't believe anything comes out of your mouth. All right, Mr. Young, you're a liar too, excuse me. No, you're whatever. Okay, next thing is you just got it on the legislature board, okay? With a lie, your first words is a lie, okay? And you attacked his board members. Okay, we have good city manager. All right, hardest working, including myself. All right? And also, everybody's posting that it took 30 minutes to get there, it did not. Falsehoods. False, false, false. That boomers, and it took our agents, those personnel, though, there to get there, that's another false lie. Okay, we didn't any minutes, we never disbanded our volunteers. Never disbanded our volunteers, all right? At a very young age, at 17, I was warned up with the constitution, and I had done so all my life, and I still do so. And I will say this, but with your freedom of speech comes great responsibility to tell the truth. Okay, Mr. Young, you might get some glasses.
Well, I was there, I saw the same thing.
Well, that, that I got a video, I got a video that said all, that is untouchable, that shows that. Anyway, that's my, what I want to say. I had to say something, there were tired falsehoods about myself. Okay, and I don't know what these people's motivation is.
Thank you. It is me, I didn't feel that agreement, since we've been called liars, can we get some results out? Probably not, fortunately.
New business, special consideration possible, actually, following items. Proclamation. Proclamation of gratitude and appreciation, members Gonzalez, who take a bail. Whereas, the council of La Guanavista wishes to express appreciation and gratitude to Alhama Gonzalez for his years of service in the town of as council member place four, in a certain way, for her years of service for the town of La Guanavista as councilor place six. Whereas, Councilmember Gonzalez was first elected as council member in May 2017, was reelected in 2018 and 2021. It continued to, this continued serving as council member place four. And whereas, Councilmember Diego Vea was first appointed in December 2020, reelected in 2021, to continue serving as council member place five. And whereas, the town of La Guanavista Town Council is grateful for the years of service, with his commitment and knowledge that both Councilmember Gonzalez and Diego Vea brought to our community with the years. Now therefore, consideration of all that has been done, thank you for your service to our community faithfully, with integrity, and we said for all. And we with all your knowledge and investment, city business, along with other advisors, for the US service. And we say thank you to your families, who continuously supported you throughout your journey here with us. And most importantly, we thank you for your love, La Guanavista's residents. Faithfully serve the great city. Words can never fully demonstrate the content, gratitude, appreciation, and happiness. As your fellow council, we're going to be the city staff and residents, have your personally, in your role as councilman. Your tenure with us will be cherished, and we wish you the very best in the next season of your lives. Or this day of the night, day of April 26. And I just want to say, I've been having a hard time with all of you. We began serving on boards together with the, the ability that shoots a little bit. And it was a joy to serve it for so many years, and it's crucial in mainly getting the, the, the Marina situation figured out, making sure our talent didn't curb, he's a great family man, local and figure for generations, so, thank you. Of course, that's Thank you, Mr. Sophie.
Thank you.
And I hope everyone keeps them in your prayers. New business, discussion consideration possible, actually, following items. Okay, we do the proclamation, minutes, consideration possible, actually, to approve the following minutes, March 19, 24.
The time was recorded.
Yeah.
We'll give emotional
March 19, 24 minutes.
I'll start.
Was made by Councilmember Howard, decided by Councilmember Brown, to approve the minutes, March 19, 24.
Councilmember Howard?
Yeah.
Councilmember Tyler?
Yes.
Councilwoman Friday?
Yes.
Councilmember Diego Vea?
Yes.
Yes. I have three financial reports, we do a monthly financial reports for every
So, page in your packet, the basic reconciliation for the general fund, the our balance per book in the general fund right now, they have between 10 million and 10 million dollars a week. And the balance is probably next, documenting in your packet for each of our funds. And we're at the six month mark of the, of the year, so we need to be, someone knows about I think, so, right now, we're at 81% of residents' usage for the for the year, and we have selected 97% of our company tax revenue. And compared to for last year, this time, we put the standard and we wrote about 79% of the income, so we're on track, sorry, that we want to collect to go. And then So, for our total amount of expenses, we're at 45% of our expenses, so we're right a little bit under that. And we're, last year, this time, March, we see we're at 47% of our so we're and then the next, I am the registrar, the nobody even wants any stuff from the office. Register, well. I would be happy to find out.
Just one little one, and I know it makes sense, it says first page, that tracks for 294. But I'm sure, your specialty slash bags.
So, man, because I'm a director, I'm a new champion, more
the last one's horrible.
Ooh, question space turns, progress. Now, I'm just hoping to hear with this, special consideration possible, actually, very cycle.
So, there are contracts, and also our contract is coming up for our our fellow contact in the vendor, so, Mr. Cudo and I, we're Brown over to, you guys may be on wherever average, recycling services, and one that we is that the recycling bin, it comes every Saturday, gets filled up rather quickly, so, one of the suggestions that we've come up with is having a and so that's something I've been trying to approve and organize that community not to do. So what's happening is, we'll find out that we already have one every Saturday, and so they come from other places. So our residents reach out on the opportunity, because other people might be taking advantage of our situation. So, that's one suggestion we would like to go with forward, and then I have Mr. Cudo here to opportunities that we consider when it goes to up to here.
Do you need mayor? Unfortunately, I don't have a golden they don't leave that in the work. Just real quick, I can look, just give folks to, to go over a little bit of the history. And, you know, give them a shout out, and thanks to some of the points here. So we began servicing the town of Lounan in 2003, and we do thank you for your trust, and I just, I know that of I, I get a lot of questions about, well, it's just crap. And it is just crap, but there's a lot that goes on behind the scenes about it, whether we're talking about recycling or any other issue. Just the logistics and that sort of thing, and to go into my thank yous, Gonzalez, thank you very much. And to the rest of the city staff, they've always been open to communication, and anything we've asked, they've come forward and been able to help us out with it. One of the things, one of the phrases that we use within our company is that we're partnering together with our customers to create a more sustainable world, right? And this leads us to the recycling. Last year, the town of La Guanavista, which in fact is the most productive recycler as far as input recyclers outside of Brownsville within Cameron County. Yeah, for our small communities, that's great, so we process 52.63 total tons in 2020. That's like 105,000 pounds that did not go, now, all of that, that doesn't mean that all that did not go into the landfill, right? But there's a significant portion of that that is moved away from that, so kudos to you guys and the residents who are joining in on these efforts. So, and I was just going there, recycling this one, I'll ask me to change some of our plans, that we got one idea in the program now. There's a, a big RFP coming out in the city of Brownsville, that will be we hope, obviously, to, to get awarded, but one of the things is citywide mandatory recycling, right? So at that point, we would be able to provide and make our own recycling center here in Cameron County. Ideally, they would like it to be in Brownsville, if that's what's on the RFP, that's, that's fine, you guys have just given a jump from there. So with that, we also have the capability of pulling out about 90% of the plastics that goes in there. We have just built a 10-block facility, 10-square block facility in Las Vegas, where we're taking everything from, you know, plastic bags to plastic bottles, any sorts of plastic, we separate them by the type, and we recycle that into, you know, I know Coca-Cola now uses 100% recyclable bottles. We sell some of the cardboard and all that kind of stuff into Mexico, and at that point, if that's, if we're able to do that, one of the things that we're able to do with the city, and this may go beyond this coming year, beyond this renewal, is that we share those profits with the city, right? And each, usually about 80% of the commodity price that we get goes back to the city, right? So imagine we get, let's say, 50% of those 56 tons, or 55 tons that came in, and we're able to get revenue from the city, that's an added value to you folks, right? At no cost, other than whatever the, the cost is for the service of picking up at each doorstep, and at that point, you you know, we, I'd probably come back before you folks and present what the actual cost of the city would be, which is most likely going to be deferred, not in whole, but mostly by the revenue return. Good guy. One of the things that Mrs. Gonzalez mentioned was the changing, and we've seen this in many communities where outsiders come in, and they take up a lot of the, the rooms in our recycle trailers by bringing commercial cardboard, that kind of thing, they don't want to pay to get it recycled, so they come, they drop it off. I have the same issue in South Padre Island, so it's just not something that is uncommon. One of the things that historically I've found that curbs that is showing proof of residence, or providing, or make sure that the people provide proof of residence required for dropping it off, right? Along with that, not to limit. If you see boxes for money market, you know, there's probably, you know, a hundred boxes of those, probably not the residential person doing that, right? There may be a commercial thing there. Now, something that had come up before, and it was from a resident or two that wondering if we were empty, or we were bringing empty containers on Saturdays. The fact that we do, and one thing that I, that is provide the actual driver, they have to send me directly every Saturday a picture of the empty with a timestamp, as well as the cleanliness, because, you know, it's trash, it'll become odorous, right? So they're providing me with that, and I've also had each of the road supervisors of this area has to make a stop for, you know, it could be 15, 20 minutes, whatever it is, but to make sure that the services being provided accurately are correct. With that, if you guys have any questions, I'd be, you know, and not even beyond the recycling, if you guys have any suggestions, anything that you've seen that we've been, you know, lacking in as far as the service, I'd like to hear that at all, or maybe we can address it.
Two questions. Sure, thank you. Thank you, Professor, for coming out here and answering the question. So, the lady explained that, am I correct? To assume that Brownsville doesn't have a recycling facility yet?
There, there's independent recycler, there's two independent recyclers, there are ones that started covering, the other one is what they call Red Base. So they're, they're both recyclers, yeah, but the city does not it takes a lot of, a lot of transfer, a lot of recyclables to warrant, you know, spending, you know, 10, 12 million dollars on a facility. One was called a municipal recycling facility, right, or MRF.
This is something
So with, with that one contract, that would be enough for us to warrant and be able to send that to the rest of the community. We have a transfer station in La, I'm sorry, in La Pedia. So with that, we'd be able to bring things from the Mid Valley West, all the way to Riverland City, and then so they, they would drop off that there, and then we would bring them and larger trucks to a recycling facility.
And the other it feels like a couple years ago, maybe a couple years ago, we were told that all of the containers will be exchanged with new ones.
Okay, that has not been done yet, that's do we know, was the program started, or did none of this?
I think the people who have broken ones, when the new comes in, they get new ones.
No, we, we have a, a national standard on that now, so
Oh, I
I was, I was not aware.
I have a excuse me, cap. Do you, do you have any home pickup recycling anywhere in the valley?
Only home, yeah, and for that, that is a walkout service, and it's it's expensive for them, because they, I think right now, there's only 45 of ours, we pick up weekly, so we, we spend $120 an hour to deploy a truck, everything from fuel, maintenance, the driver, you know, the work, right, and, you know, add the liability on top of that, so we have to reduce that cost. Now, if there's a community that is willing to, you know, there's the sun, the grass, pony up that type of money, right, to have the service, or if the, the residents are interested enough that it's important enough that, that's something they would like, that's certainly a possibility for, you know, we said, what does any other community here in the valley?
I remember when we had this conversation, and it was several years ago, and, and I know that the island was the only entity that did have that curbside service, which was a great amenity to have within the community. However, for our community, it was a little expensive. We were trying to figure out back then, if we were going to go to the water district to see if we could have the trash go through there. But I'm not sure, like, at the end of the day, I think it was a little bit too pricey.
Yeah, that's, it really, it really is, like, as I said.
And then something about that, from the transfer to McAllen to Corpus Christi was
Right, and that's that's what's happening, is that, that's why they're paying such a high rate, they're paying actually a much higher rate for the recycling than they are for the everyday trash, right? So, and again, that's, that's just the community, going towards, the community members willing to do that, right? So I can see it easily, you know, we, we can do this, give the South Padre Island, La Guanavista, Los Angeles, we've got all these small communities that are very prosperous, right, that would be interested in that, so to me, that's, I think in rounds, right, the number of pickups that we get per minute and all that good stuff, right? So if, if you would like a proposal or something like that, they definitely provide that for you. It's up to you, it, you know, but yes, I mean, to go back to your comment, it, it's, it's a little more conservative than what you would
Maybe it would be a good idea for your company to need to figure out what is the lowest price we can offer, and then try to get all the vulnerabilities, all those trends, and all that, for smaller ones, right? And because if you give us a good offer.
Right. You know, and in some cases, what I've seen, let's say, it's a matter of a couple of dollars between what the residents are willing to pay and the city comes in and kind of subsidizes that with the return on their investment with the payback they get from the commodity. You know, these are a lot, but it's, it's hard for me to tell you what you get a dollar, because for one, the commodity price fluctuates greatly, and two, I don't know what kind of volume would come out. I know that, you know, we have this much on a weekly basis, the tonnage, right, that, that I told you about, but I don't know if that's going to be reflective on, on the backend, and one of the things that happens is when it turns to, besides an education thing, is that these, a lot of residents, or some residents, use it as a second trash can, right? So that can, it's what, what else is in the truck, and that takes more effort, and, you know, you learn something as well, that we, we might think that it's right, that's hard work, but it's not, the grease in there, you know, stains, all that stuff is what makes it unacceptable, or what we consider to be taboo.
So you were talking about, then one option might be to provide proof of residency. Would that be the driver's license or would that be?
That would be.
Bank of a special car, and I think because if they're winter tax, then the driver's license may be a maximum.
Yeah, and.
That's what we need to decide, Dave, the why, it's going to, what would divide as, as proof of residency? And you know, pretty much to come in once a year and you should do some sort of, you know, like a right hold, kind of, you know, like, give me checked a year for three year. Or if every year, do they, if every, you know, they, every recycling, do they bring their driver's license in the current utility bill?
Right, and that's, that's usually the simplest way, so utility bill, the matches. But even at that, I mean, we have to be a little bit flexible, right? The utility bill may be under the wife's name and the husband, the kids bring in the, I mean, but a- after a while, our drivers get to know the community as well.
Right.
Right, so we can, we can help out.
Yeah, one of the things that happens every six months, your car is taken, you know, mutually and in effect, you know, that's why the driver, but the person who has a lot of community trash and having this out there, and you see, check ID, you know, this order, we're not having to have a forty out there. And then maybe come basically over six months, I mean, so that part is. Like, that would my, that's, you know, if you're okay with that, and that, or if you think would be better.
On the forty-five accounts you have on South Padre Island, roughly how much is the, would do the bill?
I don't know.
No.
I think it's up to you.
Just around about.
I really don't, I, I don't.
Average River Grande Valley. Or like, any.
It makes it sound. Or like, why just to come up with one number four, where to start, or propose a city or a regular trash? You, you go to recycling on top of there and it's, it's, it's a big mess. And I really would hate to be a disservice and tell you a number that's not going to be accurate, right? Or even like a certain process. But I'll, but I think it definitely get that. And like I said, it, it wouldn't be that, that much of a difference for us to, it's on the way, right? So we can, we can get it done. I'll provide you that with the surprising that's up, that's yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And if we do propose something, I would make sure that it is, that it is well advertised so that people that are interested, if you frequent the Saturdays, that they come and voice like yay, nay, like, because it's going to affect everyone, so. Yeah, that would be great.
So why don't we, you know, think about if we approve, maybe to set up a program? And then the next meeting, we'd like to prevent you.
Does the, does the card, right?
Whatever she comes up with, but, but then she'll have a solid plan of what it's going to be. Then then we'll know.
Yeah, we need to work that out.
Right, one of the things, I'm sorry. One, one of the things that actually works as a deterrent, believe it or not, is just putting up a simple sign that says recyclable residents only monitoring his place. It, it really does work, right? So of course, people are a little braver than. We do, but as, as homework for me, I'll, I'll take back to, and I'll get a response, and I'll ask to why it was definitely part of saying to not come to the place. And then I'll also get to the, the pricing on the South Padre, a recycling program, on the curbside program that they got.
And we are going to use some signage that says, you know, like, definitely let's know that, you know, bags need to be opened, hardware needs to be broken down. But many are just wanting to do those signs once we kind of get, you know, we're required to, but I think residency. So that was one of the things that the island, I believe, does a little apron signs and just kind of, as you're driving up, you know, like, you're going to have to open trash bags, so I can see that it's not actually that attached, it's probably something broken down and, you know. So we're going to do kind of some of those signs, but we'll put it.
One of the things that we've also done. And you're welcome to join me someday if you'd like to the recycling facility in McAllen and see how they do it, right? So you know, it gives us all the warm and buzzies to be able to separate and we're doing our part. But realistically, it goes in with everything else, right? Not, not the trash part, but the recycling gets co-mingled, right? Whether it's, we've got the dividers and things, because of the capacity issues that they were having at the island as well. One of the things we started doing is an automatic side loader or a front loader, where the, you know, the attendant or one of our drivers checks, make sure that it's actually aluminum cans or paper, cardboard, plastic, whatever it is, tin can, before it's dumped and it's all in one, and then we can compact that, right? So that compaction allows a ten to one, it's a ten to one compaction, right? So it, it extends the life of, or not the life, but the volume that we're able to pick up.
So that's additional.
No, no, we can provide that here, right? It's just, like I said, there is a lot of communities that, you know, that sound weird about the warm buzzer, right? But I mean, if people want to do their, their part, right? But in essence, it's, it's still going to the same place. It's going down a conveyor belt, it's coming over, you know, stuff from, from Michigan, from wherever.
So you're not going to agree on by just leaving that, 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 you're buying it, you might, you don't have more space for it.
Do you need a motion? I have a motion that the past Miss Gonzalez with developing a plan for the recycling and for the development of residency and we get to learn to.
Well, maybe by, 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 it's a member of the panel. Provide a plan for better recycling. Anything else you said?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Five, have a request, hopefully table this.
Thank you. Let me, we down to a local training, please, so.
Item six, dog park, consideration is possible, ask to discuss creation of dog park. Randy, you know.
So the dog park, I know, is not anything we need to do in the future for many reasons. However, there is a strong push for something basic, something starter, something that would generate a facility that dog owners alike, as well as the pets, could enjoy. There are many residents that do not have an enclosed fence or an enclosed backyard, you mean? So how do they, where do they take their pets to exercise, you know, and all of that, besides just walking the dog on the leash, you know? So I've had this pie in the sky idea to have a little dog park for quite some time. It's just that with the nice little movement of Yappy Hour from the golf course and Miss, uh, Miss Sally, and then here's Miss Melanie King, who has been putting together some research-based information for the council and the audience to just get some education on what this all entails. Of course, this is extremely preliminary, so it's something that we're going to move on immediately. However, you know, I think that it's just time for something basic for the community. It would be a great path that, it would be a great incentive for a lot of the dog owners, as well as the pets. So I'm going to pass it over to Miss Melanie King, who is a spokesperson for this dog park committee that has joined forces together. And the latest chair is Miss Joy Blackwood, excuse me, and she's the latest chair. She said there was about eight people on this. Your packet is, or your, the information is your. Other.
Hi, I'm King. Hi. With this thought, I'm, um, going to. And people are going to say, we did want to meet, we thought we'd answer, but the. I do, we should be in town. To formalize the process and see if there's to be established for our park. Uh, we did prepare a vision statement and admission statement, is during the packet. Now, basically, the beginning statement ends to rely on local and private funding to continue development of an off-leash dog park. Committee welcomes collaboration with residents, since this is another group's work toward this common goal. Admission statement, we are dedicated to building an off-leash community park for well-behaved and non-citizens and making it. Have a safe, enjoyable, and well-maintained area for recreation, socialization, promoting responsible animal care to individuals, residents, and commuters. Who will uphold the rules of park and curtail of animal comfort to the town's existing public parks. We have started an activity at the golf course called Yappy Hour. And this is an on-leash activity to get human companions and non-citizens to be able to have some meet and greet time and get to know each other a little bit better. And we hope to have some other events throughout the town, maybe a little park or something like that. So that's something that was started. In your packet, you'll see that we did identify the need for the building to be in a large, off别的 demographic. So we would like to try to find a dedicated fence, dogs, exercise area that does promote the health of all of the residents and as well as the dogs. Currently, we don't have an off-leash area within the community. And we do have other local dog parks in Brownsville and Virgin, because as you know, it's a third of the drive or so. And we feel like a dog park community and it exists to provide access for residents and visitors for the convenience of Fortisville and Bible as well. Dog park benefits, socialization for the dogs and friendly human companions. Exercising dogs allows them to bring up access to energy and stay physically fit, provides mental stimulation for the dogs. Society sounds and smells of dog park keeps them engaged, prevents boredom, it does allow for bonding. Visiting a dog park with your pet can strengthen the bond between you and your dog, and it greatly speeds quality time together, as well as bond with other community members and other dogs. Training opportunities, we do have a dog trainer who is interested in assisting with some education for dog owners as well. If we get this moving forward, so certainly be a great place for practice training and obedience skills in a distracting environment. It can help reinforce good behavior and if we do dogs with positive. Community building, concerned together with like the dog owners, a lot of others who share a love of dogs. We can't do this in a community that's poor among pet owners. We do understand our non-dog owners who have concerns and liabilities as well as. And we are working towards a process, we are working with the Virgin Dog Park, hope to get their information that they have in place for the liabilities and the joint maintenance and as well as very collectively addressed that. To deal with those as much as possible. Community and community benefits for the Unabasta, living community building, enhanced service gathering place. Lost friends, links to communities, connectedness. Increase property value, having a well-maintained dog park in the city and increase property values in this round of area. Dog owners are often going to pay more than the tax system if I thought parks can provide a convenient and enjoyable environment for both of them. And free public health. Dog park research, this is like, money and help is a lot of our job, the dog, and the animal, reducing most of obesity and other related issues. Spend time outdoors in the dog park, in the bed, such as reducing stress. Responsible pet ownership, which is one thing that we feel like we're probably encourage most of the owners as we get to the dog park, our responsible pet owners. And we provide a safe and designated space to exercise and socialize and help reinforce supports of proper training, vaccination, place to clean up, leading to a well-patrolled family and respectful community. Tourism economic impact, dog parks can attract visitors and tourists, especially those who have one of their pets. I know personally, we have friends and family that come to visit that bring their, with them, they come to the island, they come to like this surrounding area. It's a great draw for them as well. It will boost local businesses, such as friendly hotels, restaurants, shops, contributing to the economy. Public safety by providing designated area for dogs to play and exercise, it can help reduce instances of off-leash dogs in inappropriate locations, such as public parks or streets. And improve public safety and reduce conflicts between dog owners and non-dog owners and your senses. Any questions? Uh, we have been researching different proposals and items that we would need to document and detail out. One is location, a secure area that is accessible and yet sufficiently apart from residential homes. Development cost, cost projections, projections in consideration of funding sources. The cost is directly proportional to the size of the dog park and the amenities at the dog park that it provides. So it's, until we can kind of get a site determined, it's hard to develop that out in much detail. Ongoing maintenance would certainly be a consideration with projections of funding sources as well as staff to get that. Fencing and entrance, we would like to have secure fencing at least five feet high, a double gated entry system for safety. A design, we would like to divide into smaller, marched dog sections to minimize potential alterations. The amenities, we would like to provide shade structures, if there's natural shade there, that would be great. If not, provide some seating for owners, fresh water access, surface considerations and waste disposal stations with bags and surfacing indications. Rules and regulations, we would definitely have clear rules regarding the licensing, vaccinations, leash use, and responsible pet ownership will be established, including liability behaviors. Community involvement, we are currently communicating with many dog owners in the community, as well as support organizations. I've received very positive feedback from the community. Rough cost estimates that we've put together, location, it would depend if it was city-owned property or private property. Access to parking, access to restaurants, access to water. Development costs, we've detailed out here just the things we were looking at, was the very rough numbers, again, of size and site, the location. Ongoing maintenance, cost projections would be at the wrong size. So we feel like probably the basic, smallest parcel we could use is about a quarter of an acre. And we're projecting that, the initial projection of that quarter would be about fifteen thousand dollars. To get started. In summary, this committee is trying to do as much groundwork as possible. And we have started with this much research with the other dog park in the area, as well as several parts of the country. And we would like to request consideration by the town council for guidance. If there is something that we could provide to you as an overall proposal or whatever the next steps would be, that we would be happy to participate in. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Manny, I want you. I would also like to say that the eight people that are on there on this board, along with them developing, participating in these Yappy Hours, an incredible amount of information that they had provided to me to review for this presentation. And like I had a conversation with this team on the phone, I said, you know, this is something that has got shut down before from this council, not this particular set council, but in the past. And for whatever reason, you know, but I think it's time that, you know, there is a movement and there is big need for a dog park in our community. You know, and of course, like I said, it's preliminary, but, you know, the voices, you know, have to speak for dogs. And I just want to say one little tidbit, and I was telling her the other day, I said, I remember when other members were on the board and you were trying to change the ordinance for the leash, for the tied-up dog, or remember that? There was a dog, there was down here, across from the Veterans Park, forever that dog was tied up, like, never was taken off of that post. And so I found it, like, mind you, to speak for the dogs, it was like, every day I had to pass by Taylor, and that poor dog just stayed there. Rains, snow, not snow, but rains, lead, you know, that poor dog was no, no shelter, no, it was, it was horrible. And so the police department really helped out and tried to cite, but, you know, we went to the point where we had to redo the ordinance for this particular animal. And there are people in the community that care about animals. And so because of that effort, we were able to change ordinance so that we had, so there is no, with the state statute of course. But consequently, the dog moved from the, from the post because of all the citations, like they were, they were breaking the law. And I just felt very passionate for the animal, you know, anytime we, we haven't, I haven't seen an animal tied up in a very long time. And we had at the very beginning, everything about virus, you're about. But it's good, it's good that people are taking care. But it's good, it's good that people are taking care of their animals, just like if they were by humans, it's good.
You're going to be a bottleneck on this whole project.
I know.
And so. We only have, we only have two areas possible.
Right.
Even for the.
Right. So, the committee, so the committee, and they, and I told her not to bring this to the table, just to have this, we're just starting. But they already researched areas within the community, right, and the owners of those. I know, so why does one still have to tell the people, I don't know. But they have that information to, to give to the council, maybe at the next meeting, you know, for, for further development. But yes, there are two, and I told you what, what the two are, right, it's over there, I know. And that's pretty much it. But you know, there's only other option. Oh, and over there, come, there comes.
In, in front of.
That's another spot, too.
No, I, I don't think we're, I would want, we're, we, no, because it's like, oh, there's no, we've really dealt with this. And so, at least over here, we have something. And that's, and the only problem with putting it right here is then that, say, all the overfought part.
I understand. The definitely get the.
Yeah, it's kind of a little work area, and so, this is.
I think.
Thinking about it quite a bit, but the library.
The library is one of the spots, I think, this right now. It would be nice for, for Ms. Nesterov, do not, the city's huge, that would be really sketch, like what if we could do something very minimal in an area that we've designated, just to see, like trial, like, well, you know, we can't predict, like all of these things happen, all these other areas, yes, of course, I believe happens everywhere, and it's, it's just a risk. But at the same time, like if you don't attempt to it, then you never educate people that are going to utilize the facility, then you never know, like it should have happened or not. So.
There's a different place, like, you go out of town. At a Harlingen Fort, King Ranch, the truck stop right there, that has a little.
Oh, yeah.
That has a little dog park. I stopped there the other day, just to look at it, it seems reasonable. And it's large enough, I don't know if it's big enough or not, but it's perfectly fit, you know, and.
It's love, sorry?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hopefully, again, this, the, the cost of acreage in this town is big, so.
Yeah.
So.
I just, but I have talked to Brownsville, and they do, what Mary King, they use temporary dog park that they set up in a period of time, like are considering, because they, it's, it can be done relatively low cost time, using or escape, and things like that, very temporary, when you do front-end structures and self-simply feel if that forget was going to go up to use the, the dog park, and so then they can, they can, they set it up with the QR code, so when he wasn't you know, they can, it's, then you can tell how many people actually visit and to slumber, you know, you know, like, you know, there's, there are plenty of parks that are ready to go, you know, we would still have to do some work to that, but there is a version of a temporary dog park that can be considered. So, I had already looked into Brownsville. So, there is that option, we're ready to consider it. But they get you, you know, they get you a lot of material, and they have a lot of materials, so they have to keep them blocked, but they can put them there. So, you know, it won't be as to put theirs to historic, but there is a way to convert ones to kind of run, but then having to, and we'll see by.
So, what I would like, what I would like is for Keane, and maybe another person from their committee to come in with you, and maybe Ms. Nesterov can you know, give us a tidbit on the, on the, on the ordinance side of things. So, maybe draw something for the next season, maybe give it a completely wider base, so this is what the temporary look like. This is what it would look like, and go from there.
I mean, I mean, and educating, meaning everyone, making sure that you know, so then you can go and that anything become. I think there's a couple.
Because that's what I, right, that's what I told her, was like, who's going to police it? And then, and then, like, are you going to have, I mean, how, how do you do that? What does it look like?
One of the big, the fact that I got concerns is that we already have a very dumping problem with dogs that I'm showing up here and I step but there's a thing that go and get off dogs, they, they go, because, you know, we are the dogs with our owners, and, and some people think they're doing a great thing, right? They find this dog on the side of the road and they're going to rescue it, and then they come, give it to us, and then we have to, you know, and we don't have the resources to take care of it and do those sort of things, so, so there are, you know, they're looking to have cameras, they could be, they'll tell us, and we'll be, you know, so there are a couple, like.
Roadblocks.
Yeah.
It's very concerned.
Yeah, you know, and, and and ordinance to say, okay, if they, if we found them, they would, you know, they, they would, they would, they would, you know, getting up the temporary, because there's a few ordinance that would need to be put into place to set it up to, you know. Sorry, but.
Okay.
No, we're not, I mean, we're definitely looking into it, and going to try our best to do what we can to make it happen. Right, without infringing on, you know what I mean? We have to like try to make everybody happy, try to make the dogs happy.
Thank you so much for that thing.
Definitely. You may report.
It's been a meeting for, for weeks ago, there's not a lot of change, and I mean, the, and the events. Patients, they're coming, they're coming, we're back. We did get noticed that another valley, like we grant, letter of intent, you know, right? Those are going, so we have, we, the, that's in the fall, the park and wildlife. And then you can tie it in, so we'll be, putting, put a pause, but this will be delayed, and try, try to kind of, find a, find a grant. Um, we did, for the Texas Park and Wildlife Grant, we did, as I mentioned, on people third, so our tech, my paper. But first, you know, we, place, you know, being, we just meant to leave, we have that, that, and other than that, there's no new development this time. The BDBG grant, which is the main grant that we got from the federal land office. They were able to submit for their first draw request, so we're moving along with the project, and it's planned, so that project is nothing new to report, other than we were able to make the first draw of like the, on the. We approved the CPDT brilliant grant program last meeting, and I'm working with the grant work, so we're able to get all of the startup documents delivered. New to report, other than, you know, the beginning stages of that. The USD grant opportunity that we've been holding out for, some of them posted, and we don't fit the criteria, but we're still working towards other ones for our library. There's no new developments on the lease grant. We want, and that's it, I'm a gentleman, should they not really, last month. We have a, so moving on, so you have eight times, have a public works position available this time, so anyone's looking for, you know, something, you know, to help with the start. They can have to make that if I'm not, you know. We had a new EMT start with our SRO program, Olivia, who, who got started on our posters. She comes to us from Lookey County, she was working, she is, from the, on the, that was, that's possible, we're excited to have her onboard. So, the new website is up and going, they, we've gotten a lot of plays coming, we look, we format, we are working with the website designers, just continuing to update and use the content better, but they're so organized and it's, it's better, and it's just going to keep, keep getting better. The, let's see, we're going to town marketing, we're selling about fifty-one percent rate of people opening our newsletters. About every email that we send is about a fifty, sixty-one percent open rate, and so, that's where we're at. That's, the sample ballots for the elections are available on the county website. And other than that, we're thinking development, I, that we have that, other than, now, really going to start. And the event update, the Easter event was a huge success, the explanation that we gave about three hundred and fifty, just away, and to participants, as always, a lot of fun and a lot of, and, but we had a good time, and always a positive feedback. Our goal is to get five hundred attendees to come to this, and make sure we're going to do the marketing a little bit heavier and a little bit different, to try to increase just in the awareness that the event, if you can, could be more, more people to come, we've got about three hundred, three hundred and fifty to left. So, we're going to try to increase it next year. The next event that the C is hosting, we're not putting on, but is the Big Heroes five K fundraiser, that is on April twenty-seventh. So, that's coming up, like I said, we, we hosted, they put it on, on a city run function, so we, they, our park and, and some of the, the staff, and police officers there, and you help each other, like that, so, and then our memorial day event, not named seven. And then just a quick recap on, for department reports, our police department stopped at four hundred and eighty-eight, had four hundred and eighty-eight stops, two hundred and sixty takes, we're building, like, two hundred and twenty-two, good morning. And obviously, our police department, along with, they responded to, we, in the twelve, so they responded to those as well. Our first response organization, which includes our A, A and T, and our, we volunteer, fire department volunteers that want to respond. They had thirty-four A and T calls and two fire calls for the month of March. And they conducted their training as normal, and we had some numbers for you for average response time. These response times are provided to us via the Fortisville Dispatch Center, and so it's through their reporting software. And the average time for dispatch to arrival is three minutes and fifty-three seconds, and then the dispatch to inbound is forty-one seconds. So, it's a really great response time, and I've had a lot of residents think that's for, that comfort, and he's like, that, that, so, like I said, we had thirty, thirty-four A and T calls, then she fired calls. The library is still picking along, it's been great with their events, one of the, the ones, BARS, the nutrition pack that we're hosting, that one had twenty-one in attendance, but last month, those, which ended up doing, joining the, so, I think, the immediate desire to be helping, you know, the community get there, so, kind of, trying to continue that route, adding lots of things. But it's got a, one of the children, they did an adult authors' symposium last month, and she's going to have a children's one, you know, the next one. And they want to shoot the novel, it's the link on the name, the walk through the, what am I trying to do?
The story walk.
No, that we want, story walk, so, just the story walk, so they'll take book, and you know, they will have sign posted all around the, the library, and it'll be a, you know, the sign, the QR code, and they can read the book, and it's kind of an adventure, and you'll walk with your, with your kid, with your child and your family, so just kind of interacted, trying to get nature and interest, so, we're just trying to create some new activity for, for the animals to do and create and, so, and if you guys feel bad about their character and stuff, and things like that. So, public works, they are still working on the drainage on Orange. They had two houses that they worked on, where they were completely clogged, so we have gotten those cleared out, and all the people moved, so, hopefully. It's going to keep getting better, because they moved their way, you know, down, up the street, moving where I come at, and we're taking, you know, just, and, and, and